Excellent. Well, the Paul Community meeting, we have a whole meeting. It's ordered at 6:33 PM on June 26th. Item number one is Public Works LED Lighting retrofit.
So, we've had only one time to receive the LED lighting retrofit. We would like a resolution to tell them to expect 56-875 from our federal gas tax fund. This is keeping in line with the upgrades that we've been doing. I was asked by a member of council as to what the buyback was or payback amount was. Basically, the payback for changing the lights will be $5,000 per year. So, request of a resolution.
So, it's going to take us 10 years to pay it back?
Yeah.
Any discussion? We're heading in the right direction here.
Chair?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The one good thing is, is it is a little bit long for the payback. Like, an 11-year payback or whatever is a little bit long. But this money is coming from gas tax, right? Or that's where it's being proposed to come from. So, it doesn't hit the taxpayers. It's actually a $5,000 a year savings for the taxpayers, right?
Right. The other alternative discussed at the committee or at their pre-committee meeting was basically that light fixtures will be changing by that time, but look at the hoggy hydro increase that's going to be in the next couple of years. So, there's no better time.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move to planning and development, 3.1, public hearing and planning district.
This is basically to put the public on notice that on July 12th at 6:00 PM, we will be having a public hearing as it relates to the formation of a planning district. The committee members that were, or council members that were attendants of the meeting, asked if we could maybe put a little more information as to what a planning district is. And speaking with the planning officer, he said, hopefully, they're going to come because their curiosity is going to be piqued. And he said, the less information you put, let's encourage people to come out there. Because it's going to be confusing, no matter how you explain it. So, we invite everybody, July 12th, we're going to be having a public hearing about the planning district.
Hopefully, we have enough chairs.
We better get some.
For all the curious ones, yeah.
I don't mean to be, I'm sorry.
That's the way it goes. Okay, so we'll have our public hearing on July 12th. 3.2, variation application 201703 for the attorney Fisher.
As a result of our last meeting, Mr. Rourke has met with staff and we've come up with what we believe would be a viable solution to the recommendation of five parking spaces, two to four parking spaces, to vary from a site area minimum of 5,000 square feet to 4,356, and also the site width of 50 feet to 33 feet. Earlier tonight, the public hearing was held. We believe that this will have a minimal impact, so we recommend approval. That is, however, our recommendation for any hearing this. I don't see my recommendation changing.
Any discussion?
It's only one parking spot.
So, just so I understand, so there'll be two apartments upstairs, so the parking spaces in the back of the building are not meant to accommodate the retail space, they're meant to accommodate the apartment space?
Yeah. What it got off is when he was looking at a restaurant, it was more parking spaces required. And he said, nope, I'll find, I'll leave it as is, it'll be a retail.
Right.
He also reduced the number of apartments in the upper part of the building. So, that's why we were able to reduce it from five to four.
Okay. Any other questions or queries?
The front end requirements, do we not have to put that on here as well?
He needs them.
Needs them, yeah. You can be right on the property line.
Oh, can you? Okay, I thought it was on the last one, from 10 foot to 0.
Different, different views.
Okay.
All right, we'll move that forward then to council. 3.3, possible public hearing.
So, this is just a heads up. Mr. Rourke is also going to be plugging through another hearing.
Sorry to keep all of you busy.
And this will be as it relates to the proposed new apartments going in at the current Michael's Ford store. So, if we get all the information back in time by the 28th, then we can proceed with the public hearing on the 12th. If we don't, the public hearing will go on the August meeting. So, it's just to give notice.
Okay. 1.1 Finance Administration, 4.1, San Water Museum.
Basically, anytime we have organizations that depend on the town of law for financial grants to operate, we also have to approve their financial statements or their audited financial statements. So, we would like a resolution to approve the audited financial statements for the San Water Museum.
Okay, we got forward then for resolution.
Question. Our audited financial statements are done for 2015 and 2016.
Pardon me?
Our audited financial statements aren't done for 2015 and 2016.
15 is pretty much complete and 16 isn't. This is their specific 2016.
I know, and I know it's all apart, but.
Yeah.
Randy, question. I see one for the San Water, but do we do any other ones as well? Like, do we do the recycle center one and the library one?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. I just don't recall seeing those.
I don't recall them, yeah.
But I don't recall doing them in 2015 either, but that doesn't mean we didn't do them.
Fair enough.
Sorry.
They usually come in so quick that it's a few of them at one time.
Yep.
Okay. All right. 4.2.1 Policies to be repealed.
There's several policies that Jen has been going through all of the policy manual with the managers for the applicable departments. There's several of the policies which are no longer necessary. They're either covered in other agreements, or they're just not necessary. So, this is, we're looking for a resolution to repeal several of the policies which are no longer needed. And that would bring back your policy manual down to about another inch less.
Okay. 4.2.2, update of the sections.
So, this one is changes to the policy manual names to coincide with actual department names. If you recall, we changed a few of the department names, so this is just to make it a little easier to flow in how we do business.
Okay.
Resolution for that.
Okay. 4.2.3 Policies and procedures to be amended.
And then the next one is amendments to several policies. And a lot of this is a matter of a lot of wording or into the practices that we have now. So, these are amendments to reflect the current day operations. And it's basically loss, workplace safety and health statement, land survey pins moving in around, credit card holding conditions and usage, it's out of date or current practice, standby has been changed, staff recruitment process, retirements, hours of working on union staff, town employee wellness center membership fees, just several things that needed to be changed throughout today.
Okay. Everybody had a chance to read them?
Yes.
All right. Bring those forward for resolution.
I had a question. The workplace safety and health one, is that, you get somebody helping out with that? Or is that who's making the, proposing the changes and the amendments? Is that coming out of a course or anything?
No, it's just the policy is not the. The policy itself, not our actual manual.
No, yeah, I understand that.
The policy was never updated when the manual was.
Okay, so you've taken the policy and updated it to the manual?
Yeah. It was what, two years ago?
2015, was it?
We hired a guy to swan.
Yeah. And we didn't update the policy.
So, this was just, this was you guys updating the policy to the manual that we'd hired that guy to do? Okay, good.
All right.
Excuse me. 4.3 Border Revision.
So, the town has been notified that the board of revision will be on Monday, November 27th at 6:00 PM. If you recall, board revision is held every fall. This is with respect to board revision for the 2017 additions and cancellations listing and also for the 28, or 2018 assessment roll. We would require a resolution appointing that date and also to appoint Jen Errea Secretary to the Board of Revision.
Okay. 4.4 Communications Policy, Council Marsh.
So, a couple of months ago, I got forward the idea of making some changes to our communications policy. And Jim, Brian, and I agreed to sit on the little ad hoc committee and go over the policy and review it. So, we did that, we made changes and additions. And in our discussions, we thought we'd also need them official to have managers and senior staff over the policy for their input. So, this is a policy that we're submitting, I guess, and we're suggesting that we have to approve it to go forward to staff for review.
Or so staff hasn't reviewed it yet.
Just so you know, I submitted it to staff so that we can have something brought about at the next meeting. And hopefully, council members can review and bring that back to the next meeting also. We will put it on the next committee, the whole agenda for discussion.
Okay. 4.5 Letters of Support, Paul Community Red Old Corporation.
Dorsey Thompson of the Paul Community Red Old Corporation requests a letter of support from the town with regards to their application to funding through the community features Manitoba Churchill Regional Economic Development Fund. I have no problem with these letters of support, however, I think we need to ensure by dealing with the other organizations such as the Chamber, Destination Marketing Committee, and CDC, that we are not overlapping what everybody's doing.
I agree.
So, I would suggest that we contact those organizations to make sure this is only one person doing stuff.
Okay.
More about TPCRC presenting to each organization. Shouldn't it should be your role to.
Just we want to make sure that it's not an overlap and we're going to be having someone else come with an application. Yeah.
No, I agree. I wanted to do this ways. 4.6 Payable Income.
We would require a resolution for figure at 12 and the amount of 104-515-94. General checks for 247, worth 3351. EFTs of 96, 710, 85. For a total of 448, 660, 30. There's some grants and fee and stuff in our checklist, which makes it a little higher. That was pretty much the balance of our grant payout.
On that TPCRC grant application there, section 11, it actually points out that they're going to reach out to the existing economic development groups, including the UCN, OCN, Council, CDC, Arm of Kelsey, Rotary, Kinsman, Northern Sector Council, like, there's a whole big list there.
So, once we get that kind of a response back to make sure we're not overlapping with that, we'll see whether we would be supporting it.
Yeah, so, so TPCRC, it looks like, is intending to reach out with, to them. I guess, maybe that's not necessarily to determine whether or not they're treading the same path that somebody else already is, but they have plans to communicate there and, you know. Sorry, I don't let.
No, that's fine. Okay, well, we'll go to the council, move that forward for resolution. 4.7, council members' code of conduct, Chris Lake and our councilor.
So, I think everyone's read what I've put out there, or I hope they have at least, so don't point at me rereading it, but I will just want to clarify a few things. And this is taken straight from the AMN Council Members Guide, so another role of council. Council is elected to make decisions for the municipality about services, policy, and programs. Council members have an equal voice at the council table. Every council member has one vote. Majority vote is required to make a council decision. Council decision is the decision of the municipality. All council members must respect the decision, even when they did not vote in favor of it. And also, only council has the authority to make the decision for the municipality. Individual counselors who make decisions on their own may be held legally or financially liable. So, on June 7th, we received a letter from the Deputy Minister of Interest Structure looking for an expression of interest on the Grace Lake Airport. On June 8th, the mayor responded without notifying the rest of council. So, and in reading the letter, the cutoff date was July 17th. So, as far as timeframe, again, I guess if there's a need for a special meeting, might have been tight, but in this case, it wasn't the case. So, 4.2 of our own code of conduct is titled Respect for Decision Making Process. And it states, every council member is expected to respect the decision-making process of the municipality. So, every member of council, we're all elected with one vote and no more, no less. Might not always like what we agree with, but the intent is to have some sort of public debate on issues, so hopefully, we're making good decisions, right? That's how I look at it anyways. When I was elected, I liked to feel like I had one vote. Again, we don't always agree. I was teasing Andrew about the fluoride. No one agreed with me. I mean, that is what it is. We made, we had a good debate and we made a decision. So, we have a situation where we potentially could be held accountable, where an individual member of council is making financial commitments on everyone's behalf. And to me, that's not right. It's not how it's laid out in our code of conduct and it's not how it's written in the AMN Council Members Guide. So, we can debate back and forth and why it happened, but really, to me, this is, process is key, right? But to me, when I look at the challenges here from a business point of view, we have process issues in a lot of cases because we don't follow the process. And this is a great example of that. And not only that, again, it could be committing us to funds. We don't even know because we never had a debate, but financially, we could be held accountable for this. If the province came back tomorrow and said, hey, you guys got an expression of interest, 500,000, what do you think? What are we going to tell you? Don't know, we never had a discussion, we certainly don't have the money to pay that kind of money. I know coming up later, our infrastructure issues in camera, we're talking about the lagoon, so we have lots of challenges. And again, we could go on. But at this time, I'd like to move the following resolution forward. Be resolved at any written correspondence, either incoming or outgoing, that has a potential financial implication for the community, be approved by council. So, that means if there's something that has a financial bearing, one person just can't decide on his or her behalf.
And also, that would mean that any correspondence received that requires a response in that matter would mean the received letter also is circulated?
I would.
No matter who the address is for?
That would be.
I would second that motion.
I'd second that as well.
I don't understand how to speak to cases of the motion, but like, it doesn't say anywhere, nowhere was there an exchange of money talked about, right? And I mean, I'm not arguing with what you're saying, we're thinking to be very careful on what sort of can of worms we're going to open here, because we had a lot of discussions regarding this issue in camera. So, are we making a decision to bring that out of camera and have those discussions now? Because you're acting like the idea of us acquiring the lands at Grace Lake never ever ever was discussed around this table. And it was. It wasn't done in a public forum, but if we're going to open it up and do that now, then we can do that. But I think it's a little unfair to act like this was totally out of the blue and that we had no idea that this was coming down the pipe, or that we never discussed that possibility at all. That's how I feel.
I would just offer that, for me, it's about the process. It's not about the topic or the subject matter. I mean, whether we've talked about it or not, whether we've talked about anything in camera or not, if, if there's a specific matter, a specific piece of correspondence that comes, which would require a decision of council to respond to it, then process would require that it come to the council table for discussion. Regardless of whether we've talked about it ad hoc, in general, I mean, you could choose any number of examples of situations where we've talked at length about a topic in anticipation of some piece of correspondence or in anticipation of some response to a question. But at the end of the day, when the information comes, it needs to come to the table for everybody to discuss, period. I mean, that is the process, no matter what situation. And if it's a really time-sensitive matter, that's why special meetings exist, that's why the mayor is empowered to call special meetings. So, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from, Crystal, but from a process standpoint, I agree with Alan 100%. If we don't, if we don't remain committed to processes, then we will always be scrambling around in chaos and not looking like we're knowing what we're doing. So, I, I feel as strongly, I think, as Alan does about this. We need to make sure that the process is followed. So, if correspondence comes, whether it's addressed directly to the mayor or to mayor and council, particularly where the matter is something of a financial commitment, or even in general, a decision where there's a, a response to a decision required, it needs to come to the table. And if the table, the date that the table is going to sit doesn't meet the timelines of the letter, call a special meeting? Special meeting is called, the people that can make it, make it. It moves forward, that is the process, and then everybody has to respect it. But as it stands, for not having followed process, now we find ourselves in disorganized chaos, again, where people are unsure what the topic even is. Was there a discussion? Did I miss something? Did I miss an email? I don't even know. And it's because it never made it to a, a proper process forum for discussion.
Councilor.
Oh, yeah, just to, to put on that same vein of process, for me, the problem becomes, one, the issue, any, any correspondence itself should come to council. Two, any response, and this is, this is where it becomes key, is to have a response, council has to have spoken. The only way council can speak is by resolution or by law. So, if there's no resolution on the books or there's no bylaw, there is no decision of council. And it doesn't matter, we can talk forever at a committee, the whole meeting like this, but that is not, this is not a decision-making body. It's, the other chamber is where we make decisions, and we do that by resolution. So, anytime we want to move forward on an issue, and if it's a time-sensitive thing, then we have to use the, the special meeting process to want to move forward. But it's important that, whether it be the mayor or anyone speaking for council, they have to have clear direction of council before you can, you can do it.
Mary?
I'm just going to agree with Mr. Gibbs' explanation. Like, the one thing I want to point out that, yeah, we're, our financial situation is pretty tight, so we would have to come up with an answer real quick. It would be, oh, well, yeah, so, that's all I have to say as far.
Anybody else? Chair?
No, I'm, no.
Great. This is pointed directly at me, so I'll, I'll just quickly address it and then we'll move on. It was suggested by, to me by the deputy minister, that we get our response in ASAP, like in a day or two. I had a long conversation with our CTO about this. There is no, I, I've read this thing 100 times, I can't find a financial amendment in there either. It was, it was not, it was not myself taking my own point of view and putting it out there. We've had, we've had many discussions over the years about this. So, I'll, I'll certainly take heed and make sure that any correspondence that comes to me will also go to all of you, but I acted as requested.
Again, I think, I get last word from Robert Schills, we're bringing the most forward.
Sure.
It's a matter of process, right? I look at the organization, you don't do a good job at following process, and this is a great example of that.
This is an example of one, Alan. There's several processes, if we look around the table.
Sure, I, I, sure, yeah, that's fine. I know, I know, but that's fine. But we need to do a better job, right? There's 16 months left, there's lots of things we need to do, and we don't, as Mr. Ford said, be, need to be chasing around and cleaning out messes. So, I'd like this resolution to come forward and like this, we'll hold on it next time or tonight or whenever. Randy?
Yeah. Basically, that any correspondence that has any financial implication shall be approved by council, correspondence received will also be approved by council.
So, we knew, we, we filed, it still needs to be, it needs to be, it needs to be authorized by the council administration.
4.8 In following meetings, councilor.
So, prior to the Canada Goose situation, there's a group of business people, almost like your tri-party meetings, that people got together, Glenn, Ross, myself, Rod, a number of other business people from all jurisdictions. And from that, the Canada Goose opportunity fell out. Now, didn't, as I put him there, take the ball across the finish line, but we sort of had a good run, long fought game. Jim went to Toronto, I think, right?
Yeah.
So, we're almost there. Glenn, who's still a business colleague of mine, brought it forward that it's something, and he's also the acting chair of PBDC, and he's brought it forward that we should look at doing the same process with people like Randy and Jen, not so much counselors, but the admin people, maybe to kick off, have one, whether it's Jim or Brian, whoever has decided, meet every month or every two weeks, so then when we go to these tri-council meetings, we're more effective with our time and career on what's going forward. So, he requested that, I bring that forward, and I think it's a great idea, I think it'd be very beneficial. I think that what followed last time, when we did all this work, this, you got a true understanding of not only what was going on, but what everyone's challenges are. And again, you guys are aware of that, the housing project I'm working on. Until I got involved, I never guessed the obstacles that OCM has to jump through as far as some of their housing issues. And I'm sure that's the same for every department. So, I think it's a great opportunity to not only understand each other better, but to come forward to the tri-council meetings, it's a real good agenda on what needs to get done.
I think it's a good idea, and I don't have a problem with it, but I would like to see somebody else take the lead. I think that RCA already kind of takes the lead and the reins on a lot of the tri-party things, and I would hate to see her get bogged down with something that's similar to the tri-party thing. So, I'm going to throw the CDC out there and see if it's something that maybe they would be interested in spearheading, because it sounds like it's a little bit economic.
This, this one is an economic, though. This is.
Can I speak on this too, please?
Yeah, sure.
For me, myself, I think this should be initiated by staff, we meet with OCM regularly. I think we need, I don't like the idea of someone telling me, you need to meet with these people to discuss this story, but that's what I'm thinking on it. Secondly, I believe the direction should come from tri-party. I think the politicians need to meet, and I'm sorry, that's not setting a very good example for us as managers and admin, that if they're not putting the time in, now we're being thrown in with this. I believe that the tri-party has a very good reason for being there. That's where we come up with all the plans, proposals, and everything else. And then this, I see flowing definitely under it, for sure.
Sure. Well, it sounds to me like we need to set up a tri-party meeting of the three councils. And I'm not sure whose turn it is, I really don't care whose turn it is, let's just take the lead on this, let's call a meeting, and let's get people.
We have a deal.
Got it?
Has there been any discussion with OCN about taking the lead on this one? Because it was my understanding that they were looking at that.
Well, if we put the suggestion out there, then either we'll take the lead or they'll take the gun, but we'll get, we'll get a meeting going.
I suggest we send out an email to everybody saying, it's been a long time, there's a lot going on.
Yeah.
We need to discuss this stuff. Because honestly, Alan, this is, this is a great idea, if we know what direction we're going in. We don't know what direction we're going in until the politicians tell us that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
When you, when you send out an email, send it out with a meeting date, time, and place, and, and what you would like to see on an agenda, and ask others if they can attend, rather than, we sometimes throw it up and then people don't, you don't give them any pick. So, and, and that's worked with the waste disposal stuff, where our working committee had to meet and, and nobody had done it, we just threw it up there, and all of a sudden, everybody wants to come and get them like that.
So, you take the lead, put a, a suggested agenda out there and.
Do it anyway.
Sure. Anything else on that? 4.9 Derelict Buildings, councilor.
Back in February, we discussed the derelict building by law. I'm just, more than anything, looking for a follow-up. At that time, we talked about the report being put out in June. So, it's only in June.
So, if I can update, 57 orders have been sent out to property owners with the June 28 deadline. Public Safety Officer has been working with HBR, they clean up their entire site, not just that one building. And in fairness to them, economically, to remove that building is not going to be cheap. So, they're doing things as best they can to try and keep it as best they can. I have a very grave concern with the amount of railway ties they have in their property versus this one. I know this is unsightly, I'm more concerned about the safety of the community with railway ties. PSO specifically went and drove through the yard and showed them what some of the issues that we had are. Again, staff is following the process, that was in the bylaw, but in saying that, 57 orders were sent out.
Wow.
And sadly, this is a regular thing. This is just round one. There's going to be round two probably in this line.
And we did just now, tonight, our council, councilor's purchase of, of Mexico, which will be using the, during that, some of the. All right. 4.10 Destination Marketing, councilor.
Okay. So, when the Destination Marketing Committee was established, the committee met several times and kind of came up with conditions, I guess, on how the committee was going to run, and then brought them back to council and said, this is what we want to do, and, you know, like, what are, how are we going to, how are we going to get the money out there? And we were told that it was going to flow through the town and that we would figure out a process, whether the Destination Marketing Committee was on invoices or whatever. And so, that was all fine and dandy, and not just myself asked, our chair also inquired several times about how the process would work. So, then we approved the grant applications and tried to get them paid out, and that's
So then we approved grant applications and tried to get them paid out, and that's where we're kind of running into a problem because now we're being told that, well, actually, you do have a bank account and we can order you checks, so you really should get a treasurer, and then you should really have somebody to do financial statements for you and submit them to the town and just all these things. So I'm a little bit frustrated because like six months ago, we were told one thing, so we went on that path and we trotted away, and now we've promised people money, and one of the groups have already spent the money. So they're putting on another event in a couple of months that they've borrowed money from to pay for this grant that we've told them that they're approved for, and they're waiting and waiting and waiting, and they keep asking, when do we get our check, how do we get our check, what do we have to do, we need this money? And unfortunately, our answer is, we don't really know, we're trying to work that out, which doesn't look good. And then we have another group who wants to do an event at the beginning of August, who is waiting for, I believe it's $2,500 from us, to rent the arena. And again, until we confirm that they have that money, they're kind of pooped, and so I'm asking that we pay out those two grants in the process that we originally approved, which was that it would flow through the town. We can get those groups to make an invoice to the town directly and then just have an adjustment done so that that money goes from the one, I mean, in my, the way it was explained to me, it's technically all the town's accounts anyway, so it would be like an allocation from that count to the town to pay out that, and in the meantime, we will work on getting the treasurer and signatories and finding somebody to do financial statements and all that stuff for us. Because again, when we were originally set up, we weren't told that we were going to have to do all of those things, so right now, we're just not set up to do that.
If I may ask, how difficult would it be? I have spoken to staff on this, and Jody did say that it would be best for you guys to have your signing officers set things up.
Which I understand that, but in the meantime, like, A, it's kind of summer, we weren't really set up for that, so now that's a whole conversation, like, are we set up? Do we have somebody who can prepare financial statements and do all of that things? Or are we going to have to hire somebody to do those things for us? Because again, we're a small board. When our board was set up, our board was set up to meet, to approve grants and to work on tourism in the community, not to have to produce financial statements and all of that thing. How do we know that from the onset? We could have been working on this and had those processes in place, but right now, we're just not set up to do that. Like, we have a chair, a vice chair and a secretary, we don't have a treasurer, again. Like, we're more than willing to do that, but in the sake of time, and these two groups that are going to have to suffer in the end, we just want to get these two cleaned up. We haven't had any other grants come in that we've approved or anything, so before the next one rolls through, we should be able to have our process in place and have our signatories. It's just really, like I said, there's two groups that are kind of in limbo right now, and that's not really fair to them because we told them that their grant was approved, and yes, go ahead and spend the money, and we'll have money to you, and yes, you can go ahead and do your event because, you know, the money's coming, but they kind of need the money to do the event, so it just puts us in a tough spot.
Jen's actually just pulled the checks out, I know that it's gone so far as that, where all you would need to is by motion at your meeting, a point you're going to have is a treasurer and signing authority. As far as the actual financial statements, I think it's not as hard as you're thinking it is, and I'm sure she helped you process that.
I know, but, so my thing is, is we don't even have a computer for me to be able to input that, so I'm supposed to, like, what are, how are we supposed to keep track of our finances right now? We're not set up to do that, is what I'm saying.
I guess her point was to run up against other organizations is where she was made that.
Which, I'm not arguing that we need to do that. My problem is, again, six months ago, when all of this started, we were told, yes, this is your process, yes, the checks will come from the town, yes, the money is going to flow through the town. I asked that question several times to a few different people, got that answer. Our chair asked that question several times and got that answer. Even since we've been bugged about, how are we going to pay out this grant? He's asked and been told, yes, the money is going to come from the town. Now, it looks bad, A, on our committee, B, on the town, and C, again, I'm thinking of these groups who have, A, either spent money that they've had to pull from another project to be able to complete this one because we've promised them that the money is coming, and B, the second group who's kind of sitting in limbo, waiting to hear whether they're going to get the money for their rental so they can even put their event on, and that's not fair. Because we screwed up and we didn't put the proper processes in place, I don't think that those groups should have to suffer. I know that there's already been other things that have been expensed, like job ads and whatever, that the town has paid, no?
Wasn't allowed to do it.
Well, then, I don't know, like, my frustration is that this is the process we were told, council gave the direction, yep, 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 and now we're saying, nope. And now we have bills that are going to be sitting there outstanding, that are going to be collecting interest, and we have, again, organizations who are doing great things in the community that we're screwing over to hit it bluntly. And I'm saying, I'm not saying that we can't change our process, what I'm saying is, you need to give us time to be able to figure this out, and these groups shouldn't have to suffer in the meantime, is my bottom line. That's what's frustrating me.
Unless I'm misunderstanding, I'm not seeing, same way Jody had explained, it was a pretty simple process.
I'm not comfortable with just calling a meeting, assigning two people to start writing and signing checks and not having any sort of process in place to keep track of those finances and track them. I think anybody would tell you that that's a bad decision. And again, like, the process that we were told that was to follow, like, again, I'm not saying we can't switch things, I'm just saying, you know, again, these groups are waiting and they're the ones who are suffering. It's no skin off of my back or anybody on the committee's back really, except it gives us a bad name. It's our face that's out there, it's us that told these people, yes, you have these money, we're the ones who are being hounded and asked, and fairly so, like, we approved them two months ago, how come we haven't been paid yet? And like, again, I'm sorry, I'm frustrated because it took two months for me to even get this answer when I asked two months ago when the grants were approved, how do we start paying these out? How do we start paying these out? Didn't get an answer, didn't get an answer until just last week. So, sorry, but I'm extremely frustrated.
Well, if I may, this is a period we're talking about, we're not talking about a board and a corporation and all that stuff.
Right.
And I see by the checks that it runs under the title, the flag of the Town of the Paw. But for your committee to spend any money, it has to give a clear direction through a resolution.
Right, which we do.
To expend so much and do whatever, and now maybe that clear direction has to be given to the chair and the vice chair to sign the checks. Now, the next question is, is what, those checks come back to the town's postbox, so then what happens to them when they go here? Do they go directly to the committee?
That's what I'm saying, there is no process in place to deal with these finances, so I don't feel comfortable just, we could, we could just say, hey, Trent and Lonnie are our signatories, go down to the bank and get them signed up, and we could just start going like this. And then at the end of the year, what happens when we don't have a process in place? And oops, we overspent $75,000, but you guys were okay with us spending money even though we didn't have a process in place.
How do you guys do it?
For what?
We're going to kind of check that right through yours.
But they're set up differently, they're a board, a non, they're an incorporated board, we're not.
Set up as one, yeah, these people assign authority, and we've hired someone to do statements, right? So they do those statements, and then actually she signs, those go to her, or that, or that, or that, so, yeah, is this a legitimate expense? Yeah, and you sign off, and sign the check.
And again, not that we can't put that process in place, but we can't do it tomorrow. It's not just as easy as going down to the bank and getting people to sign their name on the dotted lines so that they can sign checks. Like, we're going to have to find somebody to do the books for us, that's a little bit of a process, we're going to have to go back and change our budget and find out where the money's going to come from to do that. And again, in the meantime, these people keep waiting and keep waiting and keep waiting, and we have a group who wants to throw an event in five weeks.
So you're asking for a resolution of council to direct our CFO to pay them on behalf of that, I think that's acceptable.
Well, that's exactly what I'm asking for.
But I would never ask her to sign anything like on behalf of anybody unless she has the resolution of council.
Well, and that's, and again, this is what frustrates me, because when we first approved the grant, I said, okay, we've approved grants, what is the process? And I was told, we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you, and then I followed up, okay, what's the process going to be? Didn't hear anything. Okay, again, sorry, but we have these people waiting, what's the process? And then find out, oh, lo and behold, we have a bank account. So it's super frustrating because we could have done this six months ago and we wouldn't be sitting here today, but that's not what we were told.
Chad?
I can see both sides of the problem here, I can see that why there'd be a little bit of a reaction from the town to be hesitant towards paying out these from a due-to-from account or whatever, just because of the problems that came from the last time when the town was paying out expenses from the Destination Marketing Committee and what that led to. But I don't know, I think if we had a specific resolution come forward for on these two specific grants, I'm sure it would be fine. Yeah, I don't know.
Can we get pardon?
So as Randy said, just a two resolution so you can pay out these two, and then by that time, you will be able...
From the Destination Committee to say to council, here's where we're at, here's what we need you to pay out for these two towns until we get settled in? Because then at least she has something to protect herself.
Well, I can send you the minutes from the meeting where we approved the grants.
Yeah, maybe just a...
By recommendation, council to approve them on behalf.
Well, we're going to have to call another meeting for that.
That's, no, that's what I mean, council has to have it. Council has to have their own resolution, not just a resolution from the Destination Marketing.
Can we have those ready for next council meeting?
Yeah, if I get your permission. So we just need the minutes, right?
Who's your chair? Just basically saying that...
Well, the chair.
Well, Lonnie's the chair.
Whoever your chair is, is that we passed a motion at our last meeting to do this, we request a council, bring this board at their next meeting for approval.
Okay, what I want to know, Brian?
Who, on this account, we have checks for an account, how do you set up an account that has signing authority? Who is the current signing authority?
Nobody.
No one, that's the problem, that's why it's coming to us.
What do you mean, no one?
No one, because it hasn't been established, so that's why it's coming to the town.
It's going to be paid out by the Town of the Paw.
The last board was dissolved, so the signing authorities that are on file with the bank do not count right now.
Their committee that they have does not have signing authority yet, that is hence why they're asking the town to do it.
Don't you want to have signing authority on this account?
Yeah, at one point in time, when it was set up, there was signing authorities. And then since the previous group has dissolved and a new group is in place, no signing authority's been set up at the bank, although the bank account still exists. That's in the crux of the issue at this point, in terms of your group, the DMC, writing the checks, so hence the need for council to pass a resolution based on the request from the chair to write the checks for those two grants.
Which I'm hearing is not an issue.
If that's, I mean, if that's not a negative for the CFO, go for it.
They're a housing order.
Let's support it.
Can you write a letter and get Lonnie to sign it? Their secretary?
I'm sure I can.
You've got 15 minutes.
Jolene has said here, she's already taken the initiative to have checks printed for this account, they are currently in her office, which I have. At this point, the checks can be turned over to Destination Marketing. They can then issue the checks and provide any backup that is required. However, until they appoint signers, two of the current Town of the Paw appointed signers would need to sign the checks. Once the checks and backup have been completed, someone from the Destination Marketing would then, would then need any two of the following being Jolie, me, Randy, Jim or Brian that could sign these checks.
Oh, they could sign those checks right now.
So there is signing authority on that account?
Well, because we're saying the Town of the Paw, that we need a request from them to come to us.
So we don't, we don't need, we don't...
Which is like, we've made the request several times, like...
We don't need a resolution to...
You'll not do it without our consent. You have to, we have a rule, we have a house with resolutions.
Not to sign those checks, not to sign those checks.
You're asking her to sign checks that are normally not covered through us.
It's probably a good process to pass a resolution before those checks are signed.
I'll tell you right now, she will not sign them.
We've talked quite a bit about process.
Yeah.
Okay, so as frustrating as it is, we'll get these by resolution, we'll get these people get there.
Get the letters, and what we can do is at our next meeting, Jim, is to actually put in an unfinished business at our regular council meeting so that we can pass the resolution, rather than having to go to a committee, a whole, and then waiting another month.
Okay, so we'll get them paid out here on July 12. And then that'll give them time to get there.
Do we transfer any funds to that account? As counter?
The council has set up, the reserve fund has set up, it's done whenever money comes in.
So the committee knows what numbers they're looking at and whatnot?
I would imagine so.
And where do the bank's statements go? Because at the end of the month, that's what...
There is no bank statement for that account.
It would just be a reserve that's in your balance.
It would go to Jolie.
Well, yeah, but normally, if you're asking people to take responsibility for it, then...
Yeah.
It's got to, so what you're saying then is those records will go to people on the committee if you're asking them to sign it.
They would go through Jolie, then Jolie would get them.
Yeah, they can't, they can't main game their books unless they get all the...
That's right.
That's all. So as long as, as long as they're getting, they can, and I think the other side, the committee has to look at it in terms of what kind of structure do they see it working at, and what they're willing to do.
Okay. Where's mine? All right. Thank you, Mayor, put the same down on the other meeting.